All right, we did this again. 6:07, March 17, 2020, special emergency meeting of the Nelland City Council. So we have the council here, Councilmember Linda Blake, Joel Greenberg, Anne Bryan, Mayor Jeff Pelon, and Councilmember Mary Rainville is here remotely. And per our regulations under the Governor's Emergency Declaration, Chapter 12, we are responding remotely as a council. We are recording this. And we also have Lloyd Strike, our City Clerk, Treasurer. We have Commander Wayne Heath from the Sheriff's Department, and our consultant Jerry Strike, who has been retained for consulting services related to public safety and emergency management. And our meeting tonight is to talk about the emergency declarations made on the national, the federal, the state, and the county level, and to address those cities around us that are also declaring emergencies. And we'll be looking to the council's decision as to what we want to do here as a city. And then we'll be talking about specifics on services provided, services that we want to make sure we're providing, services that may not be provided until the crisis is under control. And then how we want to communicate with our residents, what we are going to do and are going to do, specifically with our office hours at the city, and with our parks, and with our recycling facilities. And we'll be addressing then the fire department services as well. Anything else that I need to announce before we get started here? All right, seeing nothing. What I'd like to do is give a little background. Obviously, we know that, I think everybody here is aware of the declarations made by the President, by the Governor, and by the Chair of the Anoka County Board. I think that the other... I'm guessing it was declarations that you had, or the signs that you had put up in the office. We, Clerk Treasurer Strike, Councilmember Bryan, and myself, the mayor, were on a conference call, or a web meeting this morning, for a little over an hour, with three dozen officials from across the county, along with the head of the, the Director of the Anoka County Emergency Management, talking about what's going on specifically in the county, what's going on in various cities around the county, and obviously, what's going on with the state. We are aware of a couple of cities around us that have declared emergencies. I am going to recommend at this point, and it's up to the council to decide, but that we not declare an emergency at this point. We have clear direction from the federal government, the state, and the county, as to what we should and shouldn't be doing. And in conversation with our city attorney, and with people in the emergency management area, and with our consultant here, there is nothing we can do as a city that isn't already covered by the three proclamations that have been made. And so I'll open it for discussion, but I would recommend at this point the city not declare. I want to say that we don't want to add to the concern unduly. I think we need to take this very seriously. I think we are doing that as a city with the steps we'll be taking here. But what I would like to say, being out in public today, Costco in particular, things are very calm, they're very clear about what's in stock, what isn't in stock. The people that are out in public are doing pretty well right now. It's not to say that we're not out of crisis, but the intention of the social distancing, the intention of closing down public facilities, really is to flatten the curve, the bell curve, on this virus. What we're learning from other countries that didn't do that, they overwhelmed their health systems. And if we can flatten the curve by doing these prudent steps over these next weeks and maybe months, and we can flatten that curve, we can avoid the problems that were seen in other countries. So that, I would think, would be our intention, to keep as calm as possible, make sure that people are taking this as seriously as possible, but not add to the anxiety. So in that, I would recommend that we follow recommendations of the Clerk Treasurer in what we're going to discuss a little later, that we take prudent steps here, but since there is no real advantage to the city, and I think, in my opinion, would add to the anxiety thereof, that we not declare an emergency here. But I will open that to discussion by the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Two questions, two comments. Right, considering, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, since the state and county have declared emergencies, then that puts us in a situation that if something came up, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, if something came up where we had to go purchase something or other, that we have the authority to do that? And that we're our, and that covers us from that perspective? If that's the case, because not that we have any plans, but I'd rather make sure that that's in place if we needed it, it could be, I don't know, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, masks, or who knows, whatever we can't take care of out of a regular budget. I can't think of anything large enough where we would normally have to go out for quotes for. Is that the case?
That would be the case. At this point, and what's unique about this, is this is a health pandemic, and this is not a catastrophe where we have to make extravagant purchases or cover our expenses so that we can be reimbursed at some later point. There's not insurance issues related to this regarding the city. So the things that we would normally declare the emergency for would be to coordinate with other agencies and get reimbursement from those agencies. So we don't anticipate any large purchases related to this. The mask, as we talked to the county today, there's fewer than 50 of the useful masks available by the county. And right now, the purchases, if you're looking to purchase them, you're talking three to four months out. So there is nothing that we have there. We do have particle masks that, while limited in their usefulness, if we do have to interact with the public in some way, would be useful. Most of our interactions are going to be done on the professional level, the emergency services, the rescue services. Right now, we'll be talking with Commander Heath about what the sheriff's going to do. I don't know if we know yet on the fire department.
We have not talked.
On response to medicals. We're waiting to hear back from the fire chief as to what the response to medicals will be on the fire department. Right now, we do respond to the full range of medicals. Dispatch is identifying medical calls that look like they could be flu-related or virus-related, and the sheriff will have comments on how they're responding to that. We're still waiting to hear back from Chief Kornor as to how, if there will be any changes in the Ramsey Fire Department regarding medicals. At this point, those are the people that need the mask, who need the equipment. We can curtail activity rather than purchase or have to make expenditures. So again, the advantage of this emergency declaration in a different situation would be significant. In this case, I don't see it.
Mr. Mayor, why are other cities doing that?
Since we're doing this, we need to make sure that we identify who's who here. So Councilmember Blake, because Mary won't be visiting.
Why are other cities declaring an emergency?
In some cases, they're significantly larger, and so they have public services that they will be shutting down that will affect more people. We don't have mass transit, we don't have the things that the larger cities do. Some, I think, is, you know, maybe a bit of a knee-jerk. There's a lot of things going on right now that people are intent to show that they're doing something, but if there is no real benefit to the city, I don't know why some are never doing it.
Okay.
But we are a community of under 5,000, and the benefit, talking with our attorney and people in the emergency management, don't see the benefit of it. Is there anybody else? Councilmember Bryan.
Another comment I wanted to make is, regardless of which option we choose, I would think we need to make sure that we actually take advantage of the opportunity to message it appropriately. We have discussed that there's no, there's no, you know, there is or isn't the need for it. If there's not the need for it, this is why, because the state and the county already have, there's no, there's no benefits that we see right now for us having to take such action.
And that's a big part of it. When the federal government, when the President came out and made the statements he did, and the restrictions that he did, on a local level, we may have decided we don't want people to congregate in groups this large. When the federal government's already come out and said it's groups of 10, when the state has come out and limited the activities, again, that is something that's already been done, we don't have to repeat it. So it's a good point that we will have on our website, you know, again, per the council's direction here, on the website, we will have links to the CDC, and what's happening on the national level. We'll have links to the Minnesota Department of Health, so they can see what's happening in Minnesota, to the county, so that... One of the problems right now is even the county is, because of HIPAA laws, aren't allowed to know exactly what's happening in the county. The news media is getting it before county officials are. News media has reported right now, there's five individuals in Anoka County that have been confirmed, or presumed confirmed, which is an interesting term. But we don't even know where they're at, we don't know what hospitals they're at, we don't know who they are, what their statistics are. Statistically, right now, this is people that have underlying health conditions and are, I think the average age right now of people dying is about 80. But that information will be updated in a central point, rather than us trying to decipher all that, we're going to give information on our website, so people can, if they don't already have it, be able to go to the professionals that are tracking this, and get something that's consistent rather than rumor. So, but it's an important point, that the county is doing that work, the state's doing that work, and federal government's doing that work. And so, rather than do that, we want to make sure that we're communicating it consistently through what they're doing, rather than adding a layer to that. Other points or comments as far as...
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Yes, my name is Blake, thank you. Is these, all of these steps going to be reiterated on our website? We're going to talk about not more than nine gathering and all this stuff? We'll, or we're just going to point them to CDC and the President's declaration?
That's a guess. You know, I think, I don't know who doesn't know this, but it certainly doesn't, it doesn't hurt to reiterate it, and say the federal government is saying this, here's that link, the state is saying this, here's that link, the county's saying this. We can provide links, and obviously, there's not enough room on our front page to cover all of that, but you know...
Yeah, well, maybe we don't have to, I'm just asking. And how about, they're talking now about more, no, this is not the words they're using, but self-imposed quarantine sort of for, for people over 70, that some of the cities are doing that now. We have a big majority of people that are elderly in this, in Nelland.
And to some degree, we're counting on the community to step up on this too, and individuals have to be sensible. You know, I know that, I've got friends that are driving back from the southern part of the country right now, and there are states that don't have this imposed. You know, they're going to restaurants, they're, people are trying to take out every other table, they're trying to do social distancing, but it's still up to people to decide what they're going to do.
Okay.
So one of the things that came up on the emergency management this morning is, how do you police that? If somebody chooses to have a meeting of more than 10 people? Commander, what are you going to do?
The Constitution of the U.S. is still in full force, so there's very limited things that is law enforcement we can do. We can ask people to use common sense and reasoning to try to help. Look, this is what, this is what, this is what all the experts are telling us we should stay away from, but unless there's some type of, right now, I've seen nothing that will give us the authority to stop somebody's gathering of more than 10 people.
So we can still encourage people as guidelines come down, if you're over 70, if you have an underlying health issue, it's wise to avoid this. But we're choosing at this point to give advice, but we have no enforcement authority.
No, not for this, I see that.
Now, that being said, I don't know what would happen if a restaurant decided they're going to open for sit-down service.
I would assume at that point, since the governor has declared this, there are state and county licensing things that can come into play, Department of Health things, that there may be other licensure ramifications, that if these establishments decide not to, just say for instance, in Nelland, the places that you have licensed to serve food and liquor and things like that, if these people were not following, if these people were not following council directives, or governor directives, or rules, or things like that, that would be the remedy for dealing with that. And then it would be a case like, if the council didn't renew somebody's liquor license next year, and they still continue to serve alcohol, we would have to approach it from that vantage point. And quite frankly, a lot of these things are going to be a first, you know, and Jerry's been involved in this for even longer than I have, and this is a first where we're seeing this type of activity, where we're having these shutdowns of public events, shutdowns of businesses. We would have to create, we're talking about different plans and how we would approach it, but right now, I would tell you that if we had an establishment that was serving, we would have to, we would go make that contact, let them know, we've already talked with the city, we've talked with the county, we know with the state, your licensure is likely going to be affected long-term if you continue this activity, and we would also have to seek other, see what other remedies are there. But right now, there is nothing that we have that would give us the authority to shut that down.
Now, we are encouraging those that do have restaurants, you know, we'd like them to be in business when this is all over, but right now, they are able to do curbside pickup, and they are able to do deliveries. We're encouraging people to take advantage of that, you know, there are different modes of delivering those to homes, you know, to avoid contact where we can. But we do want to encourage the businesses where we can to stay profitable.
So, Mr. Mayor, these businesses will stay open, but only for takeout types of things? That's what they're saying now?
That you can do a to-go pickup or delivery?
Okay, no, okay, so they're not completely shut down?
And we have not talked with the owners yet to see what their plans are. Most restaurants, the restaurants that have me on speed dial, are making sure that I understood. Initially, it was, here's how we're scrubbing our restaurants, and how we're training people, and here's how you can still come here. Now that they're not doing that, they're making sure I know they're still open for takeout and pickup.
Good.
So we're trying to encourage that. So, let's go to...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Back to the initial theory of not declaring the emergency, I would move that the city of Nelland does not declare an emergency, and if I have a second, I would speak to why.
I'll second for discussion.
A motion and a second, discussion.
And my bullet point would be, well, we've already talked about, it's already been done on a national level, it's been done on a state level, and it's been done on our county level. There's nothing more as a city that we can do to enhance what they are doing. So I think it would just be repetitive, and so not needed. We can always address something if something changes, but I believe that our county officials, our state officials, whether they be on the administrative side or the public safety side, are watching this close enough that if they see additional things, those will be brought to light, and that they would include them in their proclamations or declarations, and then we would be covered. So I think there's a very small chance of us having to do something or institute something that isn't already done. And to Dan's point of, you know, purchases, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, this is not a natural disaster, it's a health issue, and so expenditures that the city would be obligated to, I would believe they'd be, you know, probably zero, but if anything, the minimum, it would be within the existing budget. If our city clerk, Ms. Strike, finds that there is something, then she will come back to council and say, all of a sudden, we need to have three of these, and it's $1,000, you know. But that's, you know, that's her side of managing the budget and the needs for the city.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Do we have to vote on whether we're going to declare emergency or not?
Well, we do now, because we have a motion and a second.
I'm, well, the discussion for me would be, it's still emerging.
The, and it doesn't preclude that we don't do it later, but emergency declarations are made by the mayor, and I've got three days, I've got 72 hours that that holds. Anything goes on longer than 72 hours has to be this body that has to decide that. So I can declare one for three days, and then we can vote to extend it, which is what other cities have done. And because we don't declare one right now, it doesn't preclude us, preclude us from doing it in the future. If conditions change, if we talk with the people at the county, if through emergency management, through the Sheriff's Department, we decide something is not right, and these emergency proclamation would solve that, we can always address it at that point. Just right now, we don't see any, any difference that it would make, other than...
Agreed, agreed. I was simply wanting to leave the option open in the future, like say, in two days...
Conditions change, certainly.
I would want that to be available.
And from somebody who's been in the business, Jerry, is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, you're certainly, you're able to declare an emergency anytime you need to. A declaration of emergency from a local, you just think of the levels of government, we start at the local level. Every incident starts here and ends here. The resources from other people come from other people, but we still own the problem. So if we need more resources from the county, we call the county. If we need it from the state, you know, it just levels up. But the declaration really stops all of the need to get three bids, to follow, you know, processes that, to have a three-day notice before a council meeting, those kinds of things. That's what a declaration helps us with, where the mayor can call it, he has three days to get with his governing body to make more decisions. But in this case, it's a public health issue. There's not a lot a firefighter, or a police officer, or a local body of government can do, but share information, try to maintain the calm and order, share information, and then look for those opportunities where maybe a declaration would help some people. For example, if something comes out in the future that says if cities have declared a local emergency, and it benefits the business owners of, or whatever, you know, we all have to pay attention to what that means. Some of the things that could happen, although we're expecting this to last till the end of the month, it's all about social distancing, it's a process of keeping everybody at home so we don't become the sharer of more of this coronavirus, because in a matter of 90 days, that virus spread to 120 countries, and that taxes those who make vaccines, and that taxes the hospitals, and if it were to continue in our country, it's going to be, it's going to, we're already seeing what's happening, but it'll be detrimental. So we all have a social responsibility to one another to maintain our distance and our social gatherings so that we don't spread this. That's really what this is all about.
And just to confirm, that that declaration of an emergency would not help the businesses at this point. This is not like a tornado has come through or...
There's nothing to offer.
Disaster. This is not where we have to do that for FEMA to get engaged or anything else. Right now, the federal government and the state government are looking at where they can assist through financial means businesses that are suffering, but that has no, our declaration has no bearing on that.
Right.
We don't affect that positively or negatively.
Right.
The government's going to do what the government's going to do for businesses.
I believe we're in share information mode, we're, some of the things we may have to consider in the future are the police and fire response if it gets worse, what that looks like, levels of services, which we're looking at now, closing, trying to separate ourselves, so we don't, we keep continuity within our local level of government, where government still needs to continue, but if we have people come in the office, and then now we're all affected, our government, our, and our staff become affected, now we're, now we have an issue. If our elected officials can't make a decision because they're all affected, that affects all of us. So it's really about social distancing, sharing information right now.
All right, anything else on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion will do a roll call.
Mayor Pelon?
Yea.
Councilmember Rainville?
Yea.
Councilmember Blake?
Yea.
Councilmember Bryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
All right, so it's unanimous, the council stands united right now that the declaration doesn't serve any additional purposes, and we won't do it at this time, subject to any changes in conditions.
Okay.
All right. So I would like to address a request from Clerk Treasurer in our offices, I think that this makes a lot of sense, because of exactly what Jerry just said. It's the distancing right now, and what happens is, you need to make sure that the people that are trained to do certain things are available, and so you don't want them or their families getting sick. And if they're home taking care of family, and they can't come fight fires or provide law enforcement, that's going to be a problem. And so part of that is we have people at the city, and with some people working from home, some people not working right now because their businesses are shut down, we're seeing a significant increase in activity related to our recycling center. And a lot of those people are coming into the office to get, to pay for the recycled goods and get their stickers. And what we are choosing to do at this point, because we're following the national, the state, and the county lead here, they have decided to close counters. So today at noon, throughout the county, all county buildings closed.
Okay.
So there is no counter-activity, everything is online or by phone. And so we are choosing to do the same. We have a posting that you all received, through the national emergency, a peacetime emergency on the state, and local state of emergency on the county, we are going to close our city counter, so the door will be locked, our staff will be in place, they will answer phones, they will maintain the information flow on the website, and will be able to issue permits. The one question I guess I had was, fire permits is probably a big deal to people. Can we do that online at this point?
We have that online fillable now, so they can fill it out and send it in, or we can just have them email or call us with their information, and we can manually fill it out for them.
So that would probably one that will be important to Nellandites, to let them know they can still get fire permits, building permits. We will still be operating, you just won't be coming in in person.
Okay.
So there will be postings on the door. Mary, did you get the copy of the postings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, I did. I do have... I do have preference on one of them over the other, which comes to the city administrative office.
All right.
I prefer the second one that goes into the, the city now that realizes this action will cause a disruption and then the additional information.
These are two options?
One was for the recycling center and one was for the city offices.
These are both administrative offices.
I received two.
Yeah, one for recycling.
Yeah, one should be the one with...
More text?
Yeah, more text is for the city offices.
So the recycling center will be closed the same amount of time, March 31st?
Correct.
Pending reevaluation.
Correct.
All right, so we would, so the council would prefer the one with more text for the administrative and then the, it's pretty direct. At the recycling center, it is under surveillance. People should not be leaving things there. There could be fines for leaving, there would be fines for leaving that there. Right now, we're going to give it two weeks and evaluate and if it needs to be extended, we'll extend to that point, but we want to know at least for two weeks, the office will be closed to walk in traffic. We'll make it clear on the website, permits will still be available and we'll still answer phones and electronic communication. So does anybody have any concerns with the postings at this point?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
For two, a couple of questions I have is, one is, should we also not post City Hall? In this building, I mean, people don't have access to it, but if we're going to be consistent in our build, in hosting our buildings, I think we should post City Hall also. I also believe that we should close our parks and I understand that they're not, you know, they're open, so you can't put fences up, but I think that we should post the parks, that they're also closed. So if somebody is there and does something, they're doing it at their own risk because we're not in there maintaining, we can't go back after everybody uses the slide or the, you know, the jungle gym or uses a picnic table, we can't that clean it. So I think they should be marked as closed also, just as a precautionary and maybe liability issue. I would also like to see that the signs be as big as we can make them, rather than just a, and maybe Lori's already doing that and we only just received this on a eight and a half mile piece of paper, but for the recycle center, that it be a bigger sign that says we are closed and make it obvious that sometimes, you know, people don't want to read a lot of stuff, but that they see it closed, maybe that would be of help, I don't know. Also, back to the parks, I think that if we choose to close those, that we would also remove any temporary porta potties. And to help prevent people from using Twin Lakes, that we would think about moving the Jersey barriers from the hockey rink over to the sides of the gate at Twin Lakes and if we have to even maybe move some of those big folders to prevent cars from going in. Just thoughts?
Hey, let's talk about, break that down.
Okay.
Recycling center, can we lock the doors? We've got them on timers. So to lock the doors, the notice there, as big as you can make it. The porta potties, I think we only have one out right now that's by the ice rink. Need to be locked. I believe the warming house should be locked at this point since there's no ice. Do we return the porta potty at this point since it's going to be locked, there's no point in having it there and we might pay for, I think that's the $83 one, so. So are we okay with returning the porta potty at this point? The bathrooms in both parks are already locked for the season, so they're not in use. It's nice if people are out by themselves, be able to go out into the park, but if we can have it posted, Twin Lakes Park, we do have a gate and to Mary's point, we could put protection either side of the gate to keep people out. But the biggest issue there is going to be the picnic tables and the playground equipment. Does it make sense to post it and say, use it at your own risk like we do the swimming beach? We are not maintaining this equipment. You know, we consider it closed, but again, we're not sending the sheriff down to chase people out. I mean, people want to walk on the paths, people want to go out and do things in our parks, is that going to be a problem? Other than I think it is good to post play equipment, that we're not washing it down.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And maybe we, instead of putting, you know, I get what you mean, I mean, we're down here and I go for walks a couple times a day in bike rides, but I don't believe no one is around me when I'm on a bike, it's not a pretty sight. But, you know, we walk and we make sure that we don't go close to people, but it's important to get out. So maybe moving in Jersey barriers is a little bit more than is necessary, but maybe a larger sign, you know, extreme, I'm just thinking, we have extreme graphics in town. We could have a sign that can be put in with Rebar saying that the park is closed, you know, and that facilities are not being maintained. Just, again, just as a warning to people that we are not cleaning things. And especially, but as sad as it is, kids are out of school, they're supposed to be home and that's not happening. And it is, but that's, so I think that there's a potential for usage that we need to be clear with our residents or anyone using the parks that these are not being maintained to a pre-COVID-19 status.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I am sympathetic to all these parents with all these children at home that have nothing, I mean, it's hard to confine them in their home all day long. I mean, to go into Twin Lakes Park, take a walk and let them run a bit and come out, I just think maybe that's, I don't, I think we should post a sign, but to close that off completely, I think it's a little extreme. Where are people supposed to go? I mean, there has to be someplace where they can, than to just sit inside with three, four kids all day, 24 hours a day.
Yeah, and I agree, if you look statistically right now, we're not seeing issues with children, you know, but I think it's our obligation to post it and say, we're not maintaining it. If you want to come and spray down a swing and, you know, feel free. If you want to come and throw something over a picnic table and use it, I do think it's important to have a place for people to go outside, but I do think...
We don't have much share either.
That from an obligation standpoint, sorry. From an obligation standpoint, we need to let people know we're not maintaining it.
Yes, I agree with that, but I do think it's a possibility to maybe allow something to be open for people with little ones and...
Run the dog.
Yes, and be able to get on and walk through the parks a little bit and get their kids home again and in a safe place.
So at this point, the restrooms will be, they're seasonally closed anyway, so we wouldn't, that's not an issue. But I think near the playground equipment, it's reasonable to say playground equipment and picnic tables are not being maintained at this time. Use, you know, I don't know if you say, use it at your own risk or just say, we're not maintaining it and people will know that when they come in.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I think the signage was just saying that they are not being maintained to today's current standards is sufficient.
Okay.
If people are there, again, I think it would be very small number of people that don't understand what's happening in today's day.
Right.
But they, and I agree with Linda, Councilmember Blake, yeah, people do need to get out and around, so that was probably not a, that's my point. But I just want people to understand that we're not washing these things down every half an hour, or after everybody, one group of people have used them. We don't do that anyway.
Right.
So, you know, we're for sure not doing it now, so.
In lieu of COVID-19, please do not use playground equipment.
I think we could leave it up to Lori and maybe with the discussion with our attorney as to what the proper verbiage would be.
Yeah, I think to the idea that, you know, the city is not maintaining, we're not cleaning the equipment and maintaining it.
Right.
Is important. People are still, can do what they want to do with it.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
If a parent goes in there, okay, I, like my daughter with her children, she would wash that down herself before she'd use it because she's just as nervous as we are.
Yeah. And I would see that if I was, you know, bringing kids to the swings, I'd do the same thing.
Sure you would, yeah.
Give them the option. So right now, to be clear then, we want to, we will post city offices, no counter service, but we are available for permits and questions by email or phone and information will be on the website. Recycling center will be closed till at least the 31st and then be reevaluated. Parks will be posted, that equipment's not being maintained, verbiage to be determined between city clerk and the city attorney.
Are we going to post this building and keep this building closed as well?
Well, right now, we're not renting it out, we're not giving permits for this building.
Correct, and we contacted the people that did have it reserved and told them that we weren't renting it out.
How about the seniors?
Now, the church, I think only has, they have fewer than 10 people. I guess because we're not renting the building out, I would let the church service still meet if they're meeting because they don't have a big enough crowd for what the conditions are. And we can control this building by not issuing rental permits. The seniors, I advise the seniors not to...
Yeah, great.
We did call them.
If you've got a target group, that'd be it.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The seniors did cancel their lunch this week.
Yeah.
And the lines tomorrow night are going to do, or whatever, Thursday are going to do an online meeting. I, I would prefer that the building not be used and I understand that the church has less people than under the 10. The problem is if one of those three have this COVID-19 and it's on equipment, on tables, on chairs, and staff goes in there for some reason the next day, they have the potential to be exposed to it. So I would say it's, I think it's better just to be a blanket, we're closed. That's my thought. I don't know what the rest of the council feels, but I think for our benefit and our, just being consistent, that our facilities are closed. You didn't look at the, county didn't say, but this library is open Tuesday and Friday and this driver's license station is open on Tuesday and Thursday. Everything is down. And so that would be my thoughts, but it's, it's a council.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I tend to agree with Mary. I think if, as long as everyone's taking the proper precautions across the whole United States, the county, the state, let's just do our due diligence, do it right the first time, not allow for any possibility, any opportunity, we just do it right the first time. We just make City Hall closed for the, till March 31st, when we can reevaluate.
Councilmember Blake? You're next.
Well, I suppose closing it across the board is probably the smartest thing so we have a continuity to what we're doing.
Councilmember Bryan?
I'd rather be consistent and not say, well, if you have under 10, have to get into if you're under 10 or over 10, you can, yes, you can meet here, no, you can't meet there. I think if a group wants to meet and that group is comfortable with finding a place to meet, you know, homes are still available to meet and that doesn't, that has a less impact on our liability for the situation.
All right. Seems to be the consensus. So that being said, brings us, so anything else on that as far as the postings?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I do have a question on, regarding the city administrative offices and maybe we'll talk about this later, so just let me know. I have a question on our consultants and the issuing of building inspections and building permits, but if you want to talk about those specific things later, that's fine.
Okay, we'll bring that up, but as far as closing this building, we have potentially a PMZ meeting next week. Do we have anything on the agenda?
I do have information on that and everything on there can be moved to April.
Okay, then I would recommend we move to April on that and then evaluate at that point. If this is still going in in April, meetings that have to happen, Lori is investigating online meetings options and the other one is the 31st, we had a meeting to follow up on our zoning, so that can be pushed out as well. So the two meetings, the PMZ and the meeting of the council on 31st, will be moved at this point and should this emergency situation continue, we will look at online meetings and opportunities elsewhere. All right, so...
The 31st is going to be moved?
Correct.
And we pick a date?
No.
So I'm just going to take it off.
All right, to the situation with contractors. Lori, do you have anything as far as building permits, as far as planner activities and interacting with the public?
The building permits can all be done online. We receive those online, we send them out to the contractors or homeowners online if they choose. We can take payment over the phone or if they need to come in and would like to come in with a check or cash, we can have them put it in the mailbox out front and we'll give them their permit. We can just hand them their permit and it'll be an as-needed basis. Most people pay with a credit card anyways, but if they're insistent on paying with cash or check, we will meet them to do that. It's a rare occasion.
And then as far as the planner, I would assume at this point, we're going to hold off on any code enforcement that isn't life and limb, life and health?
Yep.
So minimal activity on the planner's part?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Hang on one second, Councilmember. And so those meetings could also be, I know you meet weekly, you could do those by phone?
Correct, yes.
Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, one of the questions I had was what, on planning and you addressed that and the fact that it's, we're only looking at anything that's a public safety, that aggravating, non-critical will not be dealt with at this time. My question on building inspections, and I understand everything's being done online, which is great, so we're ready for that. My question to Lori would be, have you had any contact with Minspect and are they considering any changes in how they're handling applications and/or inspections? And are they considering any changes in how they're handling applications and/or inspections?
Mayor and councilmembers, I did talk to Minspect and they are doing minimal building inspections at this time, only as needed. And when they are receiving permits, they're doing those online. They're trying to have minimal contact with residents at this point.
Thank you. Right, okay, excuse me. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To, Mr. Strike, then, are we then, will we then be telling people who are applying for building permits that there may be a delay based on the current health situation? And that delay will be relayed to them by Minspect? Not that there will be, but there may be, just so that they're aware of that?
Yes, when they imply they are being told that there is a change right now with the situation.
Wonderful, thank you. I, I assumed you had it all figured out, but they.
The, the nice thing, Councilmember Rainville, the nice thing that we've seen, we're working with Minspect is, is because we can track all activity online, you can see exactly where a permit is at any given time. So the, the permit requester is in the loop and so we, we don't have, they can follow it. Even if there is a bit of delay, they, they know what's going on, who's had it last, who has it currently. So that's working very well. So I, I think that there, there shouldn't be too much consternation there. Again, what I saw in public today is, is people are understanding the, the gravity of it and people are getting along pretty well. And so that's, that's encouraging to hear. That's exactly what we need. We need to keep calm and carry on, you know, be wise, but, but let's keep things as normal as we can, so. Anything else regarding that? Lori, anything else we should know there?
Everything.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
So I'm assuming that, that Jimmy's Johnnys can just come out and take it, but if it's going to cost us a whole lot for them to take it, you know, maybe we just need to stash it somewhere. I don't know.
It's, it's on a monthly basis. I mean, we, we'll pay through March, but at that point, we'll just take it. There's no charge for pickup.
I don't know that. I'll find, I'll.
You can find out, but typically there hasn't been, but, but maybe, maybe there is now. Rules are all changing though. All right, so let's talk, I want to talk about why we have Jerry here. When we engaged Jerry Services, the service provided specifically was stated as professional consulting services related to public safety and emergency management. Our intention was to utilize Jerry to help us work with our surrounding cities to come up with the best solution for our, our fire services. Jerry has been actively doing that. He's met with all four cities around us at this point.
Either by phone or in person.
And, and so that project is, is moving forward. We have legislative language that has been drafted and is starting to move forward, but then the House shut down. And we may or may not have an opportunity yet this year to get that legislation passed. It all depends on when the legislature starts back up and how long they choose to go. So that's, that being said, Jerry Services are still valuable because we're still doing evaluation of previous calls, inventory, you know, there's a variety of things that will, no matter what direction we go, these things still need to be done. So Jerry will still be helping us do that. But part of that contract was, once we decided which way we were going, we know, especially coming into storm season, that we needed emergency management support here in town. And so the reason we wrote the contract with, with Jerry's company this way was to provide those services and that consulting advice to us. Being that we have three declarations, national, state, and county, and cities around us are doing things, we just wanted to let the council know that we will continue to use Jerry in the, in that capacity. Jerry will be using, we were using his expertise and his experience in the emergency management area as originally contracted. So assuming that the council is still okay with the direction we're going, Councilmember Brian and I have been working with Jerry extensively on the project at hand, with the state legislature and with the surrounding communities and with our existing firefighters. And we're communicating all that directly to Lori, so she's in the loop and can communicate to you guys. So I would like to suggest that Dan and I continue to that, Councilmember Brian and I continue to work with Jerry on these things and communicate to Lori what needs to go to the whole council or to the website, to any public information release that we need. That we would be able to draft that with Jerry's help and communicate effectively with our emergency management partners, with the city of Ramsey and our fire department, with the sheriff's department, and with the county emergency personnel and anybody we need to on a state level. And so we, again, one of the reasons we picked Jerry was because of his extensive experience throughout the state, actually throughout the country and, and around the world. So we are very fortunate to have him here at this time and, and if the council doesn't have any reservations, we will continue as planned, utilizing him a little more up front here while we're continuing to make decisions regarding our fire services. So any discussion or concern in those areas? All right, seeing and hearing none. Commander Heath, so one, one of the things that, that we are waiting to hear from Chief Coneran is some fire departments are choosing that have responded to medicals previously. Some cities respond to a full range of medicals, some only respond to certain medicals. Some of those that have responded to medicals in the past have chosen to this point not to send their firefighters to medical calls. So I've asked Commander Heath here tonight to explain the current practice that we have been experiencing with the sheriff's department and, and if there's any changes that are foreseen. We talked a little bit on the phone earlier and I thought better to express that to the whole council at once.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, as we spoke a little bit, you asked me what some of the different fire departments were doing and I spoke with our patrol commander, Commander Lenzmeyer, and it sounds like, just like you explained, we're seeing a gamut, across the gamut of different things that different fire departments are doing. Some are not going to medicals, some are going to limited medicals, depending on what the call for service actually is, throughout that whole gamut. So for us, our deputies normally respond to all medical calls in our communities that we serve. With that said, during this time, probably about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, we implemented a process of if we're going on a medical and the, the nature of the medical is a non-emergency, where it is more like somebody is calling because they're having some type of a, more of an illness and not like either a traumatic or, or emergency type event, we're waiting to see whether if fire and rescue are responding or if ambulance gets there and requests us, we will respond. If it's a life-threatening emergency, we're going regardless of, of the nature of the illness. But in, in addition to that, our communications, our central communications is asking a host of questions now when people are calling 911 and reporting some type of medical. They're asking questions about travel, flu-like symptoms and things like that. And if they respond affirmatively to that series of questions, they're letting our staff know and fire know as well as ambulance, so the, so the staff can be prepared. So we're, we're basically, with the exception of flu-like symptoms on medical type calls and low-level medicals, we're still responding to all emergency type medicals. So if somebody calls in having shortness of breath or having chest pain, we're still responding. But if you were to call in and say, you know, I'm just not feeling well, I've had, I've got a fever and I've got a, I've had stomach cramps for two days and, and what other, other host of things like that, we're probably gonna wait. Well, what we will do is we'll ask either fire or ambulance to advise if they're, if our presence is needed. And then if they need us, we'll go to help. So, because in a, in a call like that, there are very limited things that our deputies do to begin with. Since it's not a, either a traumatic or a life-threatening event, there are very few interventions that we could do to help that person anyway other than simply verbalizing and trying to, to comfort people. So versus sending our staff into a situation like that where we could expose them to, whether it be normal flu or, or this type of, this type of virus, we're just deciding that we'll wait and then if the, if fire and/or ambulance need us, we'll respond.
Typically deputies will respond, are they first aid trained, do any of them EMS or EMT?
Uh, some. We have a whole, a whole spectrum. The state mandates that we have at a minimum advanced first aid training when we, to get our peace officer's license, we have to have that. Some choose to get their emergency responder and there's a newer term for it, but the EMT, some of our staff have that as well. So it's a tiered system. There's generally, there's probably four or five different levels of those tiers and most law enforcement live in the lower levels of that. And, and it's really our interventions are for if there's life-threatening things that are going on, really the ABCs of, of helping keep people alive until the professionals that have that higher level of training and can provide that higher level of care get there.
So to reiterate, you know, for anybody that's watching online, our services at this point, we don't know that there's any changes in the fire response as far as medicals. At this point, we don't know of any. So we're assuming, because we haven't been told otherwise, that that response will be as it's been throughout the years. There's been a slight adjustment in the sheriff's response, but we still are getting response to critical situations. So from a resident's response time, other than they can't walk up to the counter at the city and they can't take the recycling, recycling in right now, life should be relatively unaffected in the city.
And, and I want to reiterate for anybody that isn't here present or hasn't heard this before, that doesn't mean that you're not going to get help. What we're saying is, you know, whether the ambulance provider, that it will be the one that comes to your call for service. Where normally, unlike that medical call of the flu-like symptoms we're talking about, normally we would be there, but we're simply going to limit the amount of people that are exposed to that and let it be the professionals that can actually take some interventions to help the people. So they will still get service whether, depending on that, I just didn't want people to think if they're listening that they weren't going to get help. They certainly will. But it would just be, it will look a little different than it does today or did yesterday.
And we've been talking from an emergency management standpoint too, that the dispatch is asking more questions, as you said. Have you been out of the country? Have you been on a cruise? Do you have these certain symptoms? So they are screening a little better because the other thing is typically on a medical call, we'll send a, a truckload of firefighters. And at this point, we are counting more on the, the ambulance services, the rescue services. And if there are any of those COVID-like conditions, we are not sending in firefighters en masse in that. Because again, those are trained professionals. There isn't somebody else who can do the firefighting if we take that group out with illness. So we are being cautious that way, but we are responding. We're making sure that we're responding, so. Along those lines, and again, we'll be working with Jerry to make sure that we're communicating well with the ambulance services. Any changes within the sheriff's department or within the fire department, we'll be communicating, again, through Lori to the whole council. And as appropriate, we'll be putting that on, on website if there's a significant change that affects residents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
If I can add also, on some of our other calls for service, what we're trying to do to limit exposures, if it's a lower level call for service, something that can be handled over the phone versus a deputy and a reporting party crossing paths, what we're doing is asking deputies to call instead of meeting face-to-face with somebody that's complaining. And, and when I talk about lower level priority, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about things that are, sometimes we end up with people that want to talk about neighbors' dogs barking and, and all other myriad of things like that.
Reports.
Where it really is gonna boil down to a deputy writing down the complaint of that person in a report versus going and meeting with them face-to-face. We're asking the deputies to, to make, to do reports like that over the phone to limit exposure. And if, for some reason, on some of those lower level calls and even on other calls that we do have to respond to, we're asking the deputies to, to be a little bit creative in keeping their distance. And hey, you mind stepping outside and talking to me versus stand, walking into somebody's house? You know, can we, can we have our conversation here in the front yard versus going inside where you have a whole entire family in there? And then if they do have to go inside to try to keep those distances appropriate, as we've discussed and we've heard about. And, and so those are some other small things we're doing. We're still going to respond to that call for service, but some of the things, we're going to try to change just a little bit for now to see if we can help stave off issues.
And obviously our, our appointment to go and tour the dispatch center will, subject to.
Yes, sir.
They, they made a plea this morning at the emergency management. They're very busy right now. Please don't plan any tours.
Right.
Anything else from the sheriff's side of things?
And the only other thing I wanted to, to let the council know is that, that the sheriff is keeping the office open for business. We are still taking walk-in traffic. There are some times where it's very important to us. Sometimes that's the gateway for our victims to get to us. And we have a, it's very difficult for us if we finally have somebody that's willing to come forward and report these things, for them to come to our front doors and find them locked. So we're trying to, we're trying to balance things. All of our, all of our customer counters have barriers between them, so they're not open to begin with. They're the type of, it's actually bullet-resistant class between everything and the only, the only areas are the, the vent holes for conversation. So we are trying to limit, you know, we're asking people to, if they do visit the building, maintain those distances. You know, if you're sick, please don't come, but if you have to come here, we are open for business and we will take care of the issue that you have. So, and that, again, all these things are subject to review as time goes on and if we have to change things, we certainly can.
It's nice to know that, that things can operate as normally as possible under the conditions. And we, we appreciate the men and women of the department to, to put themselves out in the front line like that. Even, even making arrests can be a whole different thing now.
It certainly, it certainly does. It changes a lot of things. And again, I spoke earlier that, you know, Mr. Strike has been through many of these things, as have I, but never anything like this where it's been this big of a, it's gotten to this proportion. So it's all new territory.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment too. I think it's important to note that there's three levels of discipline when it comes to response to emergencies. Law enforcement, the, the keepers of the county, they're responsible for law enforcement and at all costs, they're gonna protect their ability to continue their operation in law enforcement. There's only one other group that can put out a fire and an explosion and smells and bells and gasoline kind of stuff. That's the firefighter, so they're gonna continue to do that. And the, the medical response is actually the responsibility of the Alina Medical System. They own the primary service area for us. The councils have made a decision to provide additional care and allow the fire departments to respond and the sheriff's office because our geography creates a longer response time for the ambulance. So we don't know where this will go, but if we were to continue to talk about worst-case scenarios, there, there's a probability that there could be a time, if this were to continue to grow, that police and fire may have to look at not responding to medicals in the future because there's only one other person that can help another law enforcement official and that's another law enforcement official. There's only one other person that can help a firefighter and that's another firefighter. So we're dual-disciplined as a service directed by the county to, or the council to provide additional services. But all of that. But all of that, as the commander said, has to be looked at in the future if this continues to develop and grow.
So at this point, we're obviously keeping an eye on things, working with county officials, state officials. And it is a fluid situation. We've chosen to this point to take a two-week period to evaluate and we will reevaluate at the end of the month here to decide what still needs to be done. Jerry, do you have anything else from the council standpoint? I think as long as Dan and you and Lori and I are all communicating, we can communicate with the council.
Right.
No decisions at this point?
Right, we're getting a lot of good information, we're asking a lot of good questions and everyone appears to be open to discussing things with us. It's just a matter of what that looks like when we put everything together and eventually there'll be a meeting where we meet with the council and share the findings and facts.
Obviously, right now, the good head of steam we had going here with the legislature and with neighboring communities, there's a lot of distractions right now, different agencies shutting down and changing what they're doing. So that progress will continue, working on anything that applies to the emergency services here. Again, coming into not only COVID, but we're coming into storm season too. So I think we're in good shape right now. There's nothing we can do specifically for our businesses other than encourage them to keep going. We don't have regulations on them that we can back off, there's not much we can do here, so. I do want to address that we do have individuals and groups within the city that have offered to help where they can. And from the council standpoint, we have to decide how much we can facilitate that. The Lions organization is here to help. There are individuals who have volunteered to make food runs, make deliveries, help out individuals where they can, so we would like to coordinate that with those that are willing. At this point, our communication is going to be through our website. We do not have a Facebook page and we are choosing, unless directed otherwise, to not communicate on something that we don't have control over. So people will be able to free, to communicate on their own through their own Facebook pages or community Facebook pages, but right now those Facebook pages will not be speaking officially for the city of Nowland, that will be on our city website. If there are those people that want to help out and can give us the specific information on how they can help out so that we can relay that information, if somebody were to call into the office and say, I'm, you know, I'm an elderly person, I'm going to be bound at home, I need some assistance getting groceries or whatever it is, if we have volunteers within the community. And I really do think this is a chance for the community to pull together. So often rely on governments and the government isn't really situated well to handle what's going on right now. But individuals are. If we have good, healthy individuals that haven't been on cruises, that haven't been out of the country and they want to assist, and again, the government has, the county has some guidelines on how to make deliveries without interacting with people. Communicate by phone or by email, get the packages picked up and delivered. There's a lot of things that can be done, but it needs to be coordinated. So if we're going to ask Lori and Ellen to help out in those things, people that are willing to do that need to have specifically, what can I do, when am I available and how am I reached? So that we can then give that information to people when they call the city. Because like it or not, the local government is going to be most people's go-to. They don't know anybody at the county or state level and they don't know that they can help here, but they're going to come to us and ask for help. So we want to make sure that whatever we can do, we've got the information through a central point. So Lori has what she needs and can communicate it effectively without overwhelming what we're doing at the office as well. I think by having less walk-in traffic and more online and on the phone will help us control that somewhat. But if you guys are on Facebook and you see somebody who's got a question, direct them to the city. We'll be looking for specifically, who are you and what is it you're offering? And we want to know that they're people that are good repute in the city of Nowland, we're not just offering to anybody to go to a senior's home and help them out. So we want to be able to screen that, but we want to know specifically, what are you offering? And so I can communicate that to people. We'll be looking for some background information, if you're helping out, we want to know who you are. And if we have any concerns with that, you know, Sheriff, can we address that through the sheriff's department?
Yeah, if we were going to do background checks, we'd have to have waivers and things like that sign, releases sign, so we can do some of those things. That's what gives us the authorization to run certain checks. And just depending on what type of type it would be, it can take a little bit of time to get that done. So it wouldn't be as quick as getting a phone call and being able to say, yep, we can use this person, but...
I understand, I think we have to use some judgment in that too, though. If we're going to send people to people's homes, we have to have some idea of safety too.
Certainly.
Unfortunately, as we're finding, that there are a lot of people that will take advantage of any situation and right now people are, those that have ill designs are running rampant right now. You know, they see opportunity and they're taking advantage of it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
So with that in mind, I just want to make sure that we're not crossing the line between, again, what we talked about before, service and liability. I mean, we just need to be crystal clear, there might be a list that we have no way of checking that this person, you know, this group wants to help everybody, but you know, that there might be someone who says, yeah, I want to get on the list and we find out that there's issues. Obviously, if we find out there's issues, then we have, we have law enforcement to address those as legally responsible. But I just would say if we are going to maintain that list or publish it on the internet, that there's some sort of disclosure that says, we're just providing this list as a convenience.
And I, you know, again, I think we'll count on Lori to screen some of that for us, we don't have to put out a list. I think one of the things we want to do when people call is, are you starting with your neighbors? Have you been to your neighbor's house? You know the people in your community, in your block, in your immediate surrounding. If you have people there that might be, have underlying health conditions, if they might be elderly, are you checking on them? Because you know each other. And I think we should start with that. With the businesses, you know, what, people that know each other need to start with people that know each other rather than strangers. When the Lions that have a vetted group want to do something, that's a little different because we know who they are, we've worked with them for years. If somebody randomly calls up and says, I want to do whatever, then I think we say, we'll put you on a list and at this point we'll get them vetted. But I would encourage people, first and foremost, take care of your neighbors. You know, we have churches in this community that know who's here and who has needs. We have school boards that know where people are and have needs. And I think we start with those, start with the known community and really encourage people. You know, call your families, call your neighbors and check and see how they're doing. There was a, CNN had a great article the other day on those that are finding themselves at home, what you can do. And it really is an opportunity to dig out the books, dig out the board games, call your neighbors, take a walk, be in touch, you know, be intentional about it. Don't be victims, but be intentional. We don't want to add to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Now then, Alliance, they've sent out a list of the people that, the adults in our area and in our church that need assistance or would be shut-ins or wouldn't be able to get out, so, and asking those of us in the church to go take care of some of this stuff, so. I mean, there's some of this is going on already in our communities, is what I'm trying to tell you. And I'm sure St. John's probably doing the same thing.
And we, and I will personally be contacting St. John's and I've already been in touch with Lions Church and the Bridge Church and the Lestadian Lutheran Church, the churches that exist here in town to make sure that they have what they need to take care of their own congregants and their family and friends of those congregants. So again, it's a community activity here.
Yeah.
It's a community that needs to be wise and not spread the disease, let's get that curve flattened out so we don't tax our healthcare systems. But I think as the community, we should be encouraging that. So as you have opportunities, if you're communicating electronically with people, remind them of the existing organizations that are already here and utilize them as best we can. We just want to make sure if somebody's fallen in the cracks, we found a way to help those people. If they're not part of a church community, if they're not connected in other ways, how can we get known organizations to step in and help?
Right.
Anything else at this point? All right, so at that point, we will propose the emergency meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
A second.
A motion of second. Meeting adjourned.